Good morning.
It's too short.
Good morning, good morning. It is time to get started. It is Tuesday, September 5th at 10:00 a.m., and this is the city council work session. Work sessions are held for the purpose of council members and staff having time to discuss upcoming issues that will usually go to a vote at a future formal city council meeting and/or other items that council generally needs to be aware of that are upcoming on the city's schedules. So, we're gonna jump right in. I should also say that work sessions do not entail any public comment as there's no formal votes taken, but when we do have city council meetings and there's formal vote taken, that's when public comment is welcome on every item. So today, we're gonna jump right in with our discussion items. The first is Resolution 2023-17, U.S. Highways 50 and 550 North Montrose County Access Control Plan Intergovernmental Agreement, and I'll turn this over to the city engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. We're joined by Andrew Aymond with Stolphus and Associates, who is the consultant working for CDOT on this if there's any questions, but I'll run through kind of the general overview and then I think probably mostly open it up to questions on this one since we have been over it to some degree. So, if you remember, in late 2022, we talked at work session, went through a presentation on what access control plans are, why we do them, and how they're used as a planning tool. But in general, as corridors develop along the highways, so in this case, the highways through town are Townsend, which is 50 and 550, depending on which reach you're on, and San Juan, which is the bypass, and then Highway 90. They're all state highways owned and controlled by CDOT. CDOT has an interest in controlling access to those highways. So, as development occurs, you don't want too many access points in one small area that can create confusion, conflict points, potentials for accidents, things of that sort. And then secondary to that, you also want a transportation network that has good outlets to the main arteries. So you don't want a bunch of people trying to hang a left against 20,000 vehicles a day. You want fronted roads and backed roads that allow them to get down to signals, for example, and make safe left turns across Townsend. So, that's what these plans kind of aim to do is make long-range visions for the corridor. In this case, a lot of times, nothing happens until development comes along or a big street project comes along. So, for example, I think, great example, and it's within the corridor that we're talking about is Maverick. So on that Maverick corner, at one point, there was six or seven different parcels, some old abandoned right-of-way, different access points that some were used, some weren't. Maverick comes in, redevelops that corner, consolidates it all into one lot, consolidates it into two access points. That's the kind of thing that kind of prompts cleaning these things up. So, in this particular area, there wasn't an access control plan in place at the time, but you still have the access code. But when they come in, we know when someone buys that land and wants to redevelop it, they can know what to expect of where their access points will be, where the signals will be, things of that sort. So, it's a good example of what we're doing here. In this case, if you remember, we did the original South Townsend Access Control Plan was done in 2009. We updated that in 2019 when they expanded it and took it all the way to the southern Montrose County line because they were seeing a lot of rural development pressures in that area. They did the San Juan Access Control Plan in 2010, and then we are starting to see more development as the airport grows and everything around it. We are seeing more in the northern corridor. So, this is kind of the logical next step in that process. We are starting this one at North Ninth Street. We kind of figure everything between, or south of North Ninth Street is mostly developed and built out, and there's not a lot of room for change in those areas. But from North Ninth onward, those areas are, there are some undeveloped parcels in there. You have the airport, parcels, all of those things. So this product is actually running from North Ninth Street in Montrose all the way to the Montrose County line. So the partners in this case are, so that includes the Town of Alatha, and then CDOT as the overall owner of the right-of-way, they're the main driver on the project, but the Town of Alatha is a partner, the city, and Montrose County, and they're all financial partners in the project. But all of that's been done and paid out, and so now we're finally at the implementation stage. So with that, after we met last fall in 2022, we went on to the public engagement portions of the project. So that included some open houses and then one-on-one, so they would send out mailers to all the affected property owners and then schedule and have one-on-one meetings. Again, we were such a relatively small piece of the project that there was only a couple of meetings that we had from those outside of the open houses with the individual landowners, and that brought us to the plan you see before you. So, I remember when we talked in 2022, there actually haven't been a lot of changes to the portions within the city. Generally, within the IGA, the IGA is adopted by resolution, and then, so there's the resolution, the IGA, and then within that are the maps that show kind of what the corridor would look like. For the most part, it's if there are alternative access points available. So, CDOT's general preference is if there's a city street right behind, they're consolidating those access points, accessing those city streets wherever possible. Long-term, as medians or something go in, some access points maybe come right in, right out, but not a lot of changes from what we looked at in 2022, actually. There are a couple of minor tweaks that resulted from the open houses, but we can dive into the maps if you'd like to, or yeah, happy to answer any questions however you'd like to go through that portion of it.
Question. What kind of, excuse me, in the public meetings, what kind of feedback did you?
Mostly people just looking for clarification. Probably the more challenging area in town in our portion of this plan is down by Habitat for Humanity. There's that kind of access point there that's kind of in railroad right-of-way, kind of not, kind of serving multiple businesses but never been formalized. That area, there are some questions on what that would look like long-range, and that one we talked through with those owners. And actually, that prompted us to clean up some right-of-way also, to secure an alternate backage road through that area long-range. Should Colorado Doors march towards the north and you see further development towards the north, you may see an access point consolidated near Launa Drive, possibly, I think, if I'm right. Andrew chiming in if I'm remembering wrong, but I think either full movement or maybe even signalized, I can't remember. But mostly, most of the talk or people we heard from were about that and how that would all be configured, and other than that, not a lot of feedback from the portions of the plan within the city.
Why don't you pull up a map and maybe point out, I don't know, some of the more interesting pieces of it?
Sure. Engineering gets these things to work. I don't know what your problem is.
Wait till you get to the map part, Scott, before you get to.
Oh, yeah. And it quit working.
The maps aren't loading on my version. I don't know.
Thanks, Greg.
You've got to push the planning button when it gets to your agenda item. So, these start at the far north end here. Again, they enter into individual IGAs with each entity because if we need to, there are means to amend it if something changes, as things do over time, they're not meant to be static, that you don't have to get every single governmental agency involved to agree on it. If it's within the city, we would amend the city's IGA with CDOT, not city and Alatha and Montrose County. But the maps, within it, you kind of see the shading where it breaks out the different jurisdictions. And so we're getting through Alatha here, so let's start at the airport-ish as you're getting into town. So the blue here are Montrose County. So as you get into Montrose County here, they, some of this kind of cleanup on the north end of the airport, you hardly see my pointer, I apologize. Let me add some color here. So consolidation, access to some of this backage road that already exists here, again with redevelopment. Here's the airport proper. So this is the plan that's being worked on right now to signalize this intersection, realign the airport with industrial drive, so that matches into that plan. I think I missed one north of the airport here. Sorry, I got a couple of things on my screen.
Are there any other, I mean, where would the next signal go along, in the city of Montrose, along the highway? Does it say, like, here's where we think in the future there might be a traffic signal, or does it not go that far?
I'm gonna punt to Andrew here if he can hear me. I think.
Is that in addition to the one that's going to be at the airport?
So there's the airport, oh, LaSalle. LaSalle would be the next to the north.
LaSalle would be the next one? Okay.
Yep. And then, I'm trying to think, we also took a close look at the city's wastewater treatment plant north of LaSalle. That's this here, and kind of worked out some backage road and access concepts for potential development of this area or expansion of the treatment plan, and you made your rework there. So you kind of have a tail of city property up here at the north end. Then as you march your way south, there's the airport industrial drive, so that's the next signal. As you get in, this is a pretty challenging area. This is like Humdinger's, the hotel here. You're pinched behind Airport Road on the back, which isn't a public right-of-way that's part of the airport. You have all these access points along the front. For the most part, they try and consolidate those whenever possible. So if you had a scenario where someone were to come in and redevelop, or it's all one owner, and they can get cross-access easements between the two, they like to consolidate, but barring that, these more or less stay the same. This is that area right here by Launa Drive. Let me go to that sheet. Sorry, it splits two sheets here, but this is what I was talking about. So Habitat for Humanity is in this area here. Long-term, if Colorado Doors builds out, its road would come out here, and this would be a full movement intersection with Townsend. This is where we bought a little triangle of right-of-way was right there to clean up a corner there to make that feasible long-range. So you probably see paving and improvement of those there. This is kind of a gravel industrial park right now. And then at that point, this access point, which is the one that Habitat uses, the railroad, I don't know if they necessarily endorse that, it's kind of unknown if that was ever permitted, but nonetheless, this gives them a backage access to that. So that's one of the larger impacts, but again, at that point, this is all fully redeveloped in a large street. Looks like a very different animal at that time, and whether the railroad will be looking to clean that up before that would be up to the railroad. But as you move down, kind of similar consolidation of access points. Usually if they're single property and they have multiple, they're consolidating into one. If it's viable for interconnection between the two, and again, that relies on cooperation between the property owners, they can't force that. They try and join together. As you get to the main Grand Avenue-San Juan intersection here, that obviously remains signalized, and the CDOT is working on a product right now for a dual-left turn lane for southbound. They've been working on it for about three years now, and the railroad's involved, so it just takes some time. This is pretty typical of right-of-way acquisitions from the railroad, but. Yeah, 10 to 500, yeah.
Because the loading on that intersection and turning left.
Is, it stacks out. Yep, yep. And that's the issue, is that southbound left-turn capacity. So they are, yeah, they are eyeing a dual-left there. Provide great relief, they just need to get more right-of-way width to do that. And then, they kind of call out some of the Maverick ones that they have already been, you know, kind of cleared in through recent access permitting, but if there's any issues, they have the right to consolidate if necessary. I don't think there's anything that would go on there that would drive that. It seems to be working well. Some of these front ones here, there's a lot of tiny chopped-up lots through here that, again, if it redevelops, there's a good chance for consolidation, consolidation of access points, access from the rear, you know, kind of any mix of those depending on how it develops. One they looked at doing, they would have preferred to do a backage access to here. This is like Doll Plumbing and Moore's Automotive. You know, they would have loved to have seen access through this back road, a ceiling here. That one we said that's just plain not feasible. Ceiling is just too narrow with that right-of-way, there's a lot of encroachments that make that difficult to bring to that level of service needed to support, and it's a pretty roundabout way or circuitous. And so, these, you know, it's already right in, right out because of the median there, so more or less unchanged through that reach, and then at that point, you're at ninth with the signal, so.
Great. I think that's a really great look at some of the details in the plan, and I think the takeaway for council and the public is just that there is a plan, that the city works closely with CDOT, CDOT's working with the county, CDOT's working with the Town of Alatha, and these decisions get planned for a long ways out.
And if properties consolidate, there is going to be a different conversation about access for consolidated properties. I think that's an important thing for business owners to recognize.
Certainly. Yeah, it's usually the trigger. Maverick's a great example. Five lots chopped up gets cleaned up at some point.
And we will in the future be voting on the resolution and provides for the updated IGA.
Correct, yep.
Any other questions from council? Okay. The next item is the South Townsend Avenue Missing Link Sidewalk Expense Authorization, and this is also for you, Scott Murphy.
This is my chance for it to not work, just to. Okay, so this was a budgeted project for, it was actually budgeted initially in 2022, had contractor availability challenges towards the end of the year that ended up pushing to 2023. Concrete contractors are unicorns these days, but we finally got on their schedule, so with that, we're here for the expense authorization to make the purchase on this project, so make the form construction on this project. So, this is a missing link sidewalk project between, here's McDonald's for reference, Odell, this is, everybody knows it for, any G's here for the burritos. When they built this development, they did a sidewalk here, but it stopped. When they did the Home Depot development, they ended up with a sidewalk, but then there's a gap in between. Kind of became pretty apparent to us when we were out here building this trail. A lot of people walking through, there's a sidewalk, an existing sidewalk across the bridge, but a lot of people walking through the dirt to get in between the two. We did the missing link sidewalk on the eastern side as part of a larger CDOT grant project, but I think we've just seen a general uptick in pedestrian activity in this area. You know, maybe portion of the trail, the trail's not directly connected there, so it's, they're not necessarily, you know, people on the trail generally are destined for the park system, so probably not a big tie there, but you know, just general more, there's just a lot more going on in this area as these areas are just more and more vibrant and successful. So, that kind of drove us to put in this product here. We also had some improvements to make with some wayfinding signage here and some people that were, thought this was a driveway and we're parking here for our trailhead, so a chance to clean up some of those issues. This spring, we bid our on-call contracts. As a reminder, the way we bid those, they're, we establish unit rates and kind of open it up to anybody who's qualified to do the work, and then they give us unit rates for all the typical concrete work we do. So, you know, for example, like cost per foot of curb or cost per square yard of sidewalk. And then we use those to implement a lot of our smaller projects and then do the approvals through the same process as typical procurement. So if it's over 50,000, it comes to council for approval. If it's over 20, it goes to bill for approval. And so, on a project like this, we put in all the anticipated quantities, and then within all the contracts we hold, whoever's the lowest cost, we ask them if they're available and if willing to take the work, and if they are, we award it to them, and if they're not, then we just move on to the next, which is a, we found it to be a pretty efficient way because getting these, a lot of our concrete contractors are smaller outfits, they're five or six-man crews in town, and so it's harder to get them to focus on a full-on bid when we can bid once and then award accordingly. And a lot of times, they'll actually even partner to get some of these projects done and pool their resources, which is just kind of the nature of the concrete talent pool in our town, so.
Are there any available CDOT pools of money to help us with this one? Any grants that might be able to help offset some of this cost? I know, right now, I'm really excited that we're 5,000 under budget. That's always an exciting thing for us, but anything we can do to offset that cost even further is even more exciting.
Yeah, it's a great question. Typically with a CDOT, a lot of the money that would go towards these things, their smallest pools are like the safety process schools, they're usually about $200,000 awards, but they're federalized, and so you end up adding 30%, 40% and two years to the schedule and all that. So, for these smaller ones, a lot of times, we won't go after a CDOT grant for those reasons. On the larger ones, it makes sense. So when you start getting, you know, three-quarter of a million to a million plus, a lot of times, even though it's more expensive and there's more impacts on schedule and money, as long as you plan it in, it's efficient for us to use those dollars. At this scale, it's generally not efficient to use those, receive those grant dollars. So, for that reason, yeah, we budget as a direct funding. But yeah, we plug all that in, this one came out at 70,000, so I think we budget 75, so finally under on a concrete project. And when the work will be taking place, again, scheduled to be done this year and just along the shoulders, so no lane closures or anything of Townsend Avenue.
Who owns that property along there? And we have, obviously, we have a right-of-way to build this sidewalk?
Yes, yep. So no acquisitions were needed. The little triangle piece here to south of the mall there is owned by the Department of Transportation. They had a bridge rehab project a couple decades ago that, they bought it for staging areas for kind of their products. It worked out really great for us on the trail project as well. Just south of that, the property is owned by the Unrines, I believe. I think a couple of these parcels are Unrined parcels. The Unrines owned all of the master land that they sold off to Home Depot, so you know, that was just kind of the leftovers from that.
Yeah, okay. So the rights-of-way are not an issue?
But yeah, rights-of-way, all work would be within CDOT right-of-way, yep.
Okay. Great. Any other questions from council on, we will see this for an upcoming vote to spend this money on this piece of sidewalk, and everyone's got all the information they need? Great, okay. Next up, overview of the 2023 community survey, and David Spears joining us to go over this.
Good morning, council. It's a pleasure to be here to present some information about our 2023 community survey. And as you know, this was anticipated in the 2023 budget, and we have been working on it as staff since May and have collaborated on the design of the survey instrument and so forth. So I'm gonna go through a description of, an overview of the survey process and some of the details of the survey. So just by way of some brief background on the survey, we have done what used to be termed a household survey since 2002. Those are conducted every two years, up to 2008, and then 2010 was skipped. 2011, we conducted a household survey in-house, and then in 2016, we contracted with ETC Institute for that survey, and we are again with them for the 2023 community survey. So they have background with us, and that ends up being advantageous in analysis of the data and getting some trending information from prior surveys. So, just a quick overview of the purpose of the survey. Of course, we want to get a measure of how the city is performing with regard to citizen satisfaction on a variety of city services. So the survey includes major categories of services that we provide, also a prioritization of those services in terms of importance to that respondent, which helps us to evaluate those assessments and prioritize actions to address their concerns. It also includes information that helps us to plan and prioritize services and programs. In the past, this has been of great value in things like recycling, choice of community amenities, parks, trails, transportation projects, and this 2023 community survey also includes items like that, so that that's a tool for management and city leadership to use to make decisions. And many times, that data is a validation of things that we already have in the works, and so that's also helpful to reaffirm decisions already made. And then, of course, we want to see if there have been adjustments or changes in public opinion on a variety of survey items since the 2016 community survey, so that tracking data that we have from prior surveys really comes into interview there. And then, one of the tools that ETC Institute offers for us is the opportunity to compare our survey results with surveys that they conduct nationally and regionally. So that gives us some context for survey results, and that's particularly helpful for certain survey questions such as satisfaction about street maintenance. That is an area that is typically lower satisfaction amongst communities, not just here, but throughout the country, so it gives us an opportunity to see how we're doing, where that result may not look favorable, it may in actuality be quite good in comparison with other communities. So, just a brief overview of the survey timeline, the survey instruments, the survey forms were mailed last week, and so on Monday, they were mailed, so citizens should be receiving those this week. And that survey gather, data gathering period will continue through the 25th of September. We expect that the analysis will proceed on October 2nd through the 6th, and then we'll have a final survey report in the week of October 16. And we anticipate that we'll also have a presentation during that same week in person during a city council work session or regular meeting, but that is tentative, we're still waiting for confirmation on those dates. Just some quick information about the survey methodology. The surveys will be mailed, not to all city households, just to a randomly selected sample group. The cover letter for the questionnaire is both in English and Spanish. We definitely want to engage our Spanish-speaking population. We've taken measures to be sure that that is accomplished, and they will have options to either complete the printed survey that they've received via a postage-paid envelope, or they can go online and complete it there, and that is where the Spanish-language version of the survey is available for their use. There is also outreach information. If anyone has questions, the cover letter contains that information. We've given Chris Ottinger as our point of contact for questions that anyone in the community may have about the survey itself. Then there's a follow-up process. If, well, seven to 10 days after the surveys have been mailed, we'll have a follow-up via ET Institute, our vendor for this survey service, and they will encourage them, if they haven't already, to complete the survey form. And then, that will proceed until we reach our target number of 400 completed surveys. And that 400 surveys is based on what we need as a number to reach this 95% confidence level, plus or minus 5%. So, in real-world terms, that means if we conducted this survey 100 times, 95 times out of 100, we would have the same results, plus or minus 5%. So, we did, as a staff, ponder the possibility of doing, reaching a higher number for our final sample of completed surveys, but there's only a minimal increase in the confidence level or the percentage of accuracy and a substantially higher cost, so we didn't feel that the return on investment was adequate to justify the expense. The responses received will be validated. Of course, those who respond via the printed questionnaire, we obviously have validation via the evidence of a printed survey, but those who choose to respond online, they will be validated using their household address. So this survey is geo-coded, so we do have information about where they reside within the community, and anyone who is responding to the online survey and does not validate to that sample group and the known household address, then that will be relegated to the community-wide survey, which I'll talk about here in a moment. And then, of course, our goal is to have results that represent our entire community, so the demographic composition of the city, age, geographic location, gender, ethnicity, and other factors that are included in the survey form. As far as the survey questionnaire itself, most questions that we included in the 2023 survey were also in the 2016 survey, which again, gives us that tracking information to see how results trend over time. And then, we have included some significant changes, more, most importantly, some open-ended questions regarding pedestrian safety, transportation road improvements. That allows respondents to identify priorities that they would like to see the city address for both of those issues. They're two separate questions, and then we prioritize those two responses. Then, the community engagement process has been included in this for key issues such as homelessness, childcare, and so forth, giving the community... as homelessness, childcare, and so forth, giving the community an opportunity to choose from a list of key issues that they would like to see a community engagement for, and then a prioritization of those that they selected. And that will help guide our community engagement process. So that's a nice addition to this 2023 survey. And then ETC has recommended two additional questions that allow participants to basically let us know if they would like to participate in future surveys, then provide us with contact information so that we can do that if we want to do some follow-up surveys on any issue that has been addressed in the survey. For survey analysis, we'll have a final survey report that'll include an executive summary, of course, major findings within the survey, things that are outstanding. There'll be a variety and abundance of charts and graphics showing comparisons of survey data to 2016, and then a graphical representation of survey results to each question, and then that benchmarking that we mentioned earlier as a comparison to other communities throughout the nation. And one of my favorite features of the final report is this important satisfaction analysis where we correlate the answers that were provided for satisfaction on key city services and then how those were ranked so that we can see where our highest priority services are and many issues that we need to address. As I mentioned, too, this survey is geocoded, so we will have GIS maps that will show where those survey results were received, and we can correlate those with survey results as well. And then, of course, the standard tabular data, just showing the raw data for responses on the questions to each question in the survey. Something that we have added for this year, which is really exciting, as well as an interactive data dashboard. So this is an online tool that allows general public, council, and staff to really dig into the information and customize it according to your interests or needs. So that would include that trend analysis that we talked about, GIS mapping. In this case, GIS mapping can be used to correlate results within that geographical area. The benchmarking is there as well as in the printed report. And then the analysis for priorities, and those can be displayed via or in context with the geographic areas. And then customized cross-tabular data. So if you want to compare results within an age group or other demographic category, you're able to do that via the interactive dashboard. So now on to the community-wide survey. So we have the official survey group, which is our statistically valid analysis. It's representative of the community, carefully performed through a process to ensure that result. But we also want to receive survey information from the community at large, including individuals who do not reside within the city of Montrose. So we'll be conducting a community-wide phase of the survey. It'll be online only, and we do need some separation from our official survey period to this community-wide phase. So we will have outreach beginning in September, tentatively scheduled for September 18. We'll be doing outreach via website, social media, some print advertising to encourage people to participate in that online survey. And then we'll close that survey collection period around October 6. The data will not be combined with the official survey data and the final data report that we'll receive from ETC. However, we will be doing a basic analysis of that data, comparing it with the statistically valid sample data. And then we'll be particularly interested in extracting participant-generated data such as the portion we talked about with pedestrian crossings, transportation, and road improvements, and then those community issues and priorities. And we should see good correlation between that community-wide survey data and our official statistically valid sample data. We do have an online resource that we have created for information about the survey, We'll be including additional survey information there, and this is where the link to the online survey will reside once we are ready to move on with the community-wide phase of the survey process. Also on that page, you're able to find the 2016 community survey report for those who'd like to take a look back at what we discovered or learned from that 2016 survey. And then, once the final survey reports are generated, we'll have those available online as well. So with that, we'll open it up for any discussions that anyone may like to entertain.
Thank you. That was great. Council, do you have any follow-up questions?
I have two questions, please. First question is, can you explain a little bit more? I think I understand about benchmarking with other communities, but is that basically a comparative analysis?
Is that a comparison of what people, citizens in other communities, have said in response to the same or similar questions?
That's correct. So when we created the survey questionnaire, a lot of it was driven by how, questions that ETC Institute already has, they've surveyed nationally. And so when we get results from our survey, those can be directly correlated with their national database.
Okay. And the second and final question I have is, will the survey be, it'll be the identical survey provided to the community generally as is the statistically valid survey?
That is correct. Yeah, and we're very interested in getting input from as many participants as possible that we can combine with in our analysis of that statistically valid sample group.
Thank you.
Other questions?
David, if you don't get 400 survey responses for the statistical analysis, will you pull from the general community survey to fill that back up to get to 400?
Yes, ETC has a process that they that they follow for making sure that we fulfill that that target amount of 400. In the 2016 survey, we mailed 3,000 survey forms, randomly selected households. We ended up with 530 responses, so we exceeded the target by over 130 surveys. That was a response rate of about 18%. So we're hoping that this year we'll get a full sample. It will exceed our target number, which will add even more credibility to our numbers without too much additional follow-up.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, this item is not coming to us for a vote. This is simply so we have the information in case, say, hey, I got something in the mail. Is that official? Is it really from you guys? We have all that information now. We can talk intelligently about our community needs survey. Fantastic. Thank you very much, David.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up on our agenda is the extension of the adult gaming arcade moratorium. Assistant City Attorney Matt Magliaro.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here on a proposal to extend the citywide moratorium on adult gaming arcade uses, which is currently due to expire September 22 of 2023. This proposal, if adopted, would extend for 18 months until March 21, 2025, expiring and auto repealing the first minute of March 22, 2025. A cleavage with the recital whereas clause appears on pages 33 through 37 of today's session packet, and red line appears on pages following, 38 through 42. I want to spend most of my time focusing on page 40 of the packet that shows the red line changes just the easiest comprehension purposes to see what we're talking about. So the discussion here, in addition to changing the expiration dates in subsections B and C of 11129, the proposal, if adopted, would seek to add some language. It breaks 11129 into subsections B1 and B2, in part, that's just a general readability. B1 is the third sentence of what's in the code now. There's no additional language there. It's the third sentence of what's in the code. It's just drop note to where it's at after 1. B2 is new language. That declares owning, leasing to, or operating a new establishment or relocation of an existing establishment and violation of the moratorium would be a nuisance under our nuisance code, which our nuisance code in general, 641, states nuisances or anything declared to be a nuisance by any city ordinance or by the statutes or regulations of this state. Orders of abatement of nuisance are also available as a remedy upon conviction, along with the sentence to jail or jail term or fine under 642. A unit of prosecution is set forth in the second sentence. That means that a separate offense may be charged each day in which a violation of the section continues each day of owning, each day of leasing to, each day of operating would be a second offense or subsequently charged offense. That's already in the code. There's another section of our code that deals with that. That's NC 1-2-3C. It deems basically separate offenses committed upon each day. So someone goes into a Walmart, for example, and steals one day, they go back in, they steal the second day, those are second chargeable offenses. Our code already contemplates that. That just adds that to this language here. Consecutive sentencing authorization is set forth and express language by the Montrose Municipal Court. It's our belief and legal that the Montrose Municipal Court may permissively impose consecutive sentencing for subsequently charged offenses proven beyond reason of doubt. That said, this language can be 22 at sentencing if we have a violation. All of this is in the code in some level already in different aspects. The purpose of adding this is to clarify and restate what the ordinance is already allow, and charging patterns would be brought by our office or violations of the moratorium on adult gaming arcade establishments and what this department would have sought as sanctions in court for those who chose to run the moratorium. Purpose of the insertion of this language now is to further articulate it in the ordinance clarity. The reference also to the general penalty section is something this by seeing before the last ordinance proposal I brought before you had that. In general, legal has a product project to have all sentencing provisions look to Title I and have that reference language, so that's why that's included in there. This council's seen and heard quite a bit about these businesses over the years. The moratorium was put into place by emergency ordinance. It was effective September 21, 2021. To our knowledge, no new businesses have established in contravention to the moratorium since that time. It is held, and it's been, in our view, a social policy. We've only one business in current operation, that is the spinning one located 1010 South Cascade Avenue. The other four that were open at the time of the emergency ordinance have subsequently closed. The other three, rather, the four. We discussed the last time this matter came up, some additional legal authority, the Division of Gaming received in a bill passed by the legislature in 2022, that was House Bill 221412, that made some legislative changes to expand basically the Division of Gaming Enforcement Authority. There's two statutes in particular that that changed to prohibit conducting gaming activities without a license in a community that doesn't allow for limited gaming like we are. Some rulemaking has occurred, I've been watching that. There's been some changes, for example, to what a licensed limited gaming retailer is in the Code of regs that was made of July 15, 2023. To date, as far as I can tell, the gaming division has not issued rules for this authority. Most of the recent activity in related legal gambling seems otherwise to be kind of dated. We did hold a hybrid meeting with the Division of Gaming, their personnel, some other stakeholders around the state, some other local municipalities, some other municipal attorneys, as well as some representatives from the industry themselves. That was held December 2 of 2022. I'll note a couple of different things from this meeting. A representative from El Paso County was on the call in the meeting at the time they volunteered, were 28, identified what they called break casino sub with seven opening in Colorado Springs in one week. As we have the moratorium in place, in our view, we've held that activity at bay by not having any common contravention of the moratorium as it's been in place. The position stated that they articulated in the meeting is that they want to start with an educational campaign to approach this with some of the operators first and then formulate a plan for enforcement in a cooperative process of the AG's office. They made a statement suggesting that stakeholders who reconvene at some point in 2023, they have yet to set a meeting. So the request of the staff at this point is for an additional 18-month extension of the moratorium with additional language, during which time we can receive either more clarity from the state that can continue with the rulemaking or what the state intends to do related enforcement, or on our own with an order proposal under a low control authority. And that would be written CR 311541G and O. With that, I don't think I have any further. Is there any questions for me?
Thank you, Matt. Council, any questions?
Much question is an observation that following our initial emergency ordinance with this moratorium, I've seen a number of other municipalities across the state following suit. And I noticed that Mesa County has just recently, the city of injunction, has just implemented a moratorium mirroring a lot of these same points. So I think it's one of those, I want to thank you for all your hard work, because you've obviously been the model for a lot of their their language and their moratoriums as well. Good job.
Thank you. I do have one question. This might be a better question for Chief Hall. Obviously, since three of the four have shut down since this moratorium went into play, I would expect the number of contacts by the PD have likewise diminished, but proportionately, have you seen the number of contacts that the PD has had make go down?
Yeah, the number of contacts has actually plummeted. So the last business that is currently operating, most of our activity there is actually self-initiated. We have a lot of directed patrols. We've had a few instances. I think we had a pretty major instance here probably about a year ago. But other than that, it has been very good for contacts and for the amount of workload that these businesses were creating, the police department, and then the just the severe lack of public safety that it was causing. It's been very good.
I'll detail on that a little bit. I've noticed, I actually had records pull a six-month span to see what the activity was in this particular business. It was very clear that our officers, particularly some of our night shift officers, have made a concerted effort to do directed patrol through this business, which is much easier now that there's just one open to do. And I do think it has reduced quite a bit of the involvement, traffic. So when you do run one of these reports, it comes up with a very long list, but it comes up mostly with our officers being proactive and doing directed patrols through them.
That's great. Thanks to both of you.
That is, that's good news. I would assume that also means fewer initiated phone calls from local businesses that are having problems with these businesses being located near them. You're nodding.
No, you're correct. Absolutely.
Any other questions from council about this item, which will come forward for further discussion and a vote at a future council meeting tonight?
Tonight. Because of the timeframe.
Hey, that's a future.
Not wrong.
Okay. Then next on our agenda, proposed campaign finance ordinance for municipal elections. I will turn this over to City Attorney Ben Morris and City Clerk Lisa Del Piccolo. It's been a hot topic at CML. Yeah.
Well, good morning, Madam Mayor, members of the council. When last we spoke on this topic, you had directed us to draft an ordinance so that we could avoid the state-level preemption, which was recently attempted in a House Bill 23-1245. I'd like to share my screen here. I don't know if we're ready for that. Let me give that a shot. I'm trying to go through Zoom.
Share this in.
There it is. It worked. Thank you. Okay, so what I've got here on your screens is the same thing that's in your packet. It follows the ordinance that Matt was just talking about, if you wanted to look at that. This is a draft, an attempt by me to do what you directed us to do. In summary, what it is, is a codification in the first part of what we were already doing. That's what you all had wanted. Then we added a section which would allow us to hold hearings and have a complaint procedure locally. That was another thing that that we had wanted to do to avoid that portion being preempted by the state. And then finally, at our city clerk's request, I added a third section for records retention just to clarify how long we keep stuff related to campaign finance. If you go through here, the third whereas, I did highlight a little jab that I made there about state-level preemption. I'll delete it if you don't want to see it in there.
I don't think it's necessary.
It was fun to write it, but I'll take care of that. Okay, so section one, as described. This is the section on codifying essentially what we were already doing. So the highlighted portions there, and I did this throughout the ordinance, was just to draw your eye to those areas so that you would see things that I thought we might want a little input on. Obviously, it's impossible to anticipate everything that you might want, and so I tried to highlight things I wasn't totally sure about. So those are definitions. This is intended to be broad, to include anyone who's running for a council seat, but also things that are a little harder to think of, like issue committees or recall of a counselor. We want all of that to be subject to campaign finance regulation and not default to the state. So that's what that attempts to do. If you've got any input, let me know. Otherwise, I'll just keep on rolling so we can move through this thing. You've got 10 days to file your affidavit. So we've got two things here. A candidate committee can accept contributions and make expenditures under the authority of a candidate, and they have to open a special checking account for that purpose. Standalone candidate can only spend their own money, and they can't accept contributions. I understood from meeting with Lisa that that's essentially how we're doing it now. What we're doing here is just trying to codify all this stuff. We picked some dates here. Lisa, did you want to talk about the use of those dates? Are they the convenient ones for your office and candidates in your experience?
In the past, you've all been candidates, and we had a certain number of days before the election you had to file these reports on. So we just kind of simplified it and made it March 15, March 31, and then May 5. And then any candidate who keeps their committee active files by May 5 of the following year until the committee is terminated.
I note here the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify that whether you spend any money as a committee or as a, you still have to file these election notices.
That is correct. Even a candidate who decides to, say you're unopposed and you don't need to expend any money or accept any donations, you still have to file that zero report by these dates.
Thank you.
Next thing here that I had highlighted was post-election activity. This is just sort of a reminder, I think, but if you This is just sort of a reminder, I think, but if you had a committee with checking account, they would need to file the appropriate forms with the city clerk and close the account, or if they leave it open, then they would need to make an annual filing, just declaring what's in there. F is no funding limits are provided. That's essentially how it is now, and I believe you all were specific about that. If you feel otherwise, now's the time to say so. But that was just in following your direction.
For clarification, Ben, state statute has certain limitations imposed on individual donations?
It does.
And those already apply?
No.
Or we would be exempting ourselves from that individual campaign contribution?
You are correct. We are exempting ourselves from that. That's local control. Okay, continuing forward then. Section 2 was largely borrowed from other municipalities. I believe Cherry Hills Village is the one, is that right, Lisa? They had, I thought, a really good section on the complaint procedure and then hearing procedure. So I didn't invent this part, I adapted it. I highlighted this first part of the first sentence here. What we're doing there is limiting this to folks who have an actual stake in the elections, so local voters, so that you can't come in from out of the area or out of state and file a nuisance suit. I thought that was important. If you want to broaden it, that's up to you. This allows for the filing of written complaints. It explains what the complaints look like, what they have to contain and allege. It gives the clerk the ability to do an initial review. This is sort of a, just a quick look at the complaint to see if it meets the basic standards. Does it allege something that's actionable? Is there a name on it? Does it come from a local voter? All that kind of stuff. Clerk can dismiss the ones that are just defective on their face.
Can I ask a question that kind of would maybe summarize all of this? Are we saying that if a candidate doesn't file, doesn't file, that the only penalty is if another citizen complains about that versus the clerk's office saying there's a, I believe with the state, it's $50 a day that you're late? So, that the only way that someone quote-unquote gets in trouble for not doing the required paperwork is if another citizen complains about them?
That's true, and that's the way we've been operating. If there was something agreed, just say you were a standalone candidate and you accepted a donation. You know, of course, if I notice that, I'm going to consult with our city attorney. You know, we don't just look the other way, but this would just be the way that an actual complaint is handled.
Okay. So we don't really have penalties if people don't do it? We don't have a $50 a day that your report is late fee? We thus have a complaint process for other citizens?
Penalties are a little bit further down.
Okay.
When there's been a complaint that's been adjudicated?
Okay.
Then the penalties apply. I think that's getting more to what you're really asking.
Sure, yeah. That's just interesting, because the Secretary of State, with its state level, would impose a penalty if you filed three days late. It would come with a bill. The city clerk's office, you could file three days late, and unless someone complained, it doesn't really matter?
That's one, F8.
Okay.
Everything you said is correct. This is codifying what we do now.
Okay.
So again, I'm just marching forward based on that idea.
We try to stay on top of making sure everybody files by the deadline. And there, I would say in the past, there might have been things that were unintentional and gave candidates the opportunity to correct, but said if a complaint was filed, we would have to deal with it.
So philosophically, we have more of a approach of helping folks who, they may be new to this, helping them get it done, get it done in a timely manner, and not just throwing penalties out, and which might ultimately discourage people from running for office because it is a little intimidating and you're not quite sure what paperwork is involved. So you see your role more as facilitating it and helping them get it done than catching them and issuing a penalty.
Exactly. I mean, I send, the week that those reports are due, I send numerous emails. I'll go so far as to call the candidate.
Yeah.
Just to make sure we meet the deadlines.
Philosophically, I think that's a great approach for local elections, is to be more along the lines of helping and reminding than it is just a penalty. That's great.
So picking up where we left off, in the same spirit of what the mayor was just saying, if the clerk determines we've got a complaint, it's valid and it's in the proper form and so forth, the next thing she can look at is whether or not it's curable in an informal sort of a way. So, Section E talks about how you go about curing certain types of violations, the ones that can be fixed, in other words, should be. And this is a community-friendly way of handling a situation where we got a complaint. And this is all administered through the city clerk's office. Next is Section F. This is sort of your worst-case scenario where you got something that either wasn't cured or it wasn't curable. In those instances, it would go to a more formal hearing. We would appoint a neutral third-party hearing officer, someone who's not in the city staff, who can make a fair decision without concern for having the person become their boss in the future, things like that. So we wanted it to be an outside person. The hearing officer acts like an administrative law judge and would follow the Administrative Procedure Act in terms of how they'd run the hearing and deal with that. That's pretty complicated, and it's beyond the scope really of today's meeting. If you want to know more about it, I've got it here, we can talk about it. But I didn't intend to go into hearing procedure today. So Section F just goes through this whole thing. I was talking about the APA, that's that highlighted state statute there that you see. I'm glossing over this in the interest of time. Stop me if you want to hear more. Okay, now penalties. So your worst-case scenario is that you got a complaint, it wasn't cured or curable, you had the hearing, and the hearing officer determined that penalty is due. So these are the penalties that we put in here. This is based on loosely the Cherry Hills Village ordinance that they had. So that's where I came up with this stuff. You have a lot of options here. I think it gives enough flexibility to allow the punishment to fit the offense, whatever it may be. Trying to get it to all show up on one screen, it's, I think you can read that top line. Okay, rolling forward. We gave the city manager's office the ability to adopt rules and regs to fill in any holes. When you write something like this, you try and think about unintended consequences, you try and think of everything. But that's an imperfect process, and since none of us can really see the future, there's always stuff you might miss. Bill can fill in the blanks if we discover any defects without any ordinance. That makes it a little easier to fix small problems if we found any. Last thing here was the records retention stuff that I'd referred to. Lisa, did you want to talk about any of this? Because these were really your ideas, I just tried to write them down.
I actually liked the idea of the records retention that was in the new legislation. So we basically put this into this ordinance. We, it extends the amount of time we keep these records, and it seems like there's value to them, to keep them for the 10 years past the filing date. The six years, I believe, for the candidates was always in effect, so we're just adding a little extra time. For those who are not successful with their election, we keep their campaign finance filings longer.
I added one thing here. This I saw is sort of a catch-all, it's in B, Section 197B. So anything that would be considered a public record under the open records law would be kept for a period of 10 years. That's another one of my efforts to try and think of everything or address things maybe that I hadn't specifically thought of with a broad catch-all. And then the rest is just default provisions that you'll see in a lot of different ordinances that we draft. Any questions for me?
If we could turn to the penalty?
Penalties.
That would be F?
Eight.
Eight. In A, we say impose a civil penalty of at least double and up to five times, so on. In B, we say impose a civil penalty of $25. So that's just a fixed $25 per day. It gives the hearing officer no discretion of, of up to $25 a day, or, B seems to be non-discretionary, and A somewhat discretionary. I'm just asking a question.
These are alternatives, right?
No, they're different.
No, they're different violations.
Different, for different scenarios. Yes, David, I think that you are correct, and I read it the same way.
And is that intentional, or is there a reason, or that one is?
I think the intention is to set some guideposts here for your hearing officer. If you feel it should be more like kind of loose language, it gives them discretion to impose up to a certain amount, like $1,000, or whatever you want it to be, we can do that. This was...
I'm just throwing it out for discussion.
Sure.
I mean, with regard to Item B, I like having a very straightforward, it's basically if you're found that you did file late, that there is a straightforward penalty of $25 a day for each day that you were late filing. That's just real, it's real straightforward. It doesn't seem like there needs to be, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
I don't think there needs to be just like a range on that one, and I think A, I'm curious when A would come into play. There's a penalty for the amount contributed, received, or spent in violation, and yet we just said there is, there are no limits, contribution limits. So what would the violation, can you give me an example of a violation someone, a candidate might do that would result in A being applied?
Yes, that would be if a candidate, a standalone candidate accepted a donation.
Gotcha.
Instead of forming a committee. Or they didn't, possibly they didn't create that checking account, I mean, things like that. I mean, I can't think of any really beyond that, since we're not limiting.
But again, taking your example, a standalone candidate, once brought to their attention that they had accepted funds from another individual, would have a chance under this ordinance to cure that violation.
Correct. Are we still following all the state and the current rules where, you know, donations of $100 or more require the donor's occupation and employer? Donations of $20 or more can't be anonymous? All of that, are we still following all of those rules?
That was my understanding. I'm not sure that it's specifically that way, and that would certainly be up to counsel.
I would think that we would want to continue to follow the state's rules about accepting. We didn't want there to be a limit per the new statute, but I think we want to continue the practice that is across the board applicable to all campaign finance rules for the state of those things like I just said.
Would add that, that's something that's not in here.
Right now, the way it's set up is that somebody can donate $20,000 to someone's campaign, and we don't know who it is or what they did or why they did it.
I'm not sure it is, there's no limit, sure, but...
It's not written in here that there's any accountability for that, other than just acknowledge that you had received a donation.
Sure. I don't think it was council's intent that we allow anonymous donations. I thought our intent was purely to not be subject to the new legislation that had campaign limits, donations and limits, but that we still intended for any amount, 20 or above, to require the person who donated the money, 100 or more would require their name and their occupation and employer, all of those things. Corporations can't make donations, LLCs can, but they have to be brought out by the members of LLC, that you have to be 18-year-old or a U.S. citizen. Like, we're still following all of those rules?
Not according to this.
Not according to this.
Okay, I think that's a problem. I think we still need to follow the state.
My question then is, does HB 231245 have that language in it, or are those promulgated rules outside of the House Bill?
I think that was already established in CRS, as far as campaign contributions, the amounts, limits.
Well, yeah, okay, but then HB 231245 becomes part of CRS, so I would think then the way, if it's, if we feel it's an issue, perhaps an affirmative statement in this ordinance stating that to the extent any matter covered by CRS with respect to campaign contributions and/or violations shall be governed by HB 231244. That's not the right language, but what I'm saying is just something that picks up with what the state has enacted. If we haven't, if we've been silent as to that issue?
Yeah.
Then state law will control.
Well, exactly. I'm not sure how it should be written legally. I just, I think the intent from counsel was only to do two things, and that was to clarify local control, that instead of this new state law that passed that imposed contribution limits on city council offices, that we didn't want to be subject to that. And Lisa wanted to do some record-keeping and, and the thing we just talked extensively about, penalties and curing and a complaint process.
Exactly.
But the rest of it, we didn't want to rewrite. We want to still have, I mean, you can't have anonymous donations.
Yeah, I have major problems with anonymous donations and donations of, in excess of certain amounts having no reporting requirements.
No, it all needs to be...
It all needs to be in this document, because, or in referred or referenced in this document somehow. Back, like David was saying, referring it back to CRS.
I think that would probably be the simplest way to do it. Now, it requires a candidate to be aware that there, besides our local ordinance, there is state law that may control your candidacy. But if they understand that, then a reference to CRS, to the extent it's our ordinance is silent, would be the simplest way to do it.
Simple, I don't know. There's a whole campaign finance manual that we have always followed at the city level. The city clerk's office has always said, follow the state's campaign finance manual.
And they have used their forms.
And we've used their forms and everything, so we have always just pointed to that as the rules. And I thought all we were doing is saying, take away the one new rule that says there's limits for municipal elections, and everything else, we're following the state's rules. And I mean, that's a very long document. I don't see how we can, and it gets updated, and forms get updated, rulemaking happens in a very extensive, I mean, it's, it talks, corporations, LLCs. I just don't think we can recreate all of this ourselves. I think, we ought to say, we follow everything the state says, with the exception of we retain local control over municipal election contribution limits.
The document to which you're referring, are, that's a body of promulgated rules, or is that actually state statute?
I believe it's state statute. It's Secretary of State Campaign Finance Rules. There's a manual on the website, and we followed, before this new legislation addressed municipal elections.
Okay. Because if it's, if it's state statute, it's, to me, it's different, your approach to it, if you want to be as Barbara is suggesting, the approach to it is a bit different if it's actually adopted law under CRS, or if it's rules promulgated by the Secretary of State. Because if it's rules promulgated by the Secretary of State, then a reference in our ordinance that candidate shall be governed by the rules, Colorado Secretary of State rules regarding elections, as they may be promulgated from time to time, or something like that, so that we know our ordinance governs our elections, but we still have to follow the rules that the Secretary of State has adopted. Just my thinking. But I don't know for sure if, if it's rules or if it's statute.
I think it's rules because they continually send notice of rulemaking hearings where they update the rules. So, I mean, CRS probably says you have to follow the campaign finance manual, and then the campaign financial itself gets updated from time to time.
So we could say that here.
I think we should, and the only thing is, we're, I think we just want to take local control of a new law that sets contribution limits for municipal elections, and we want to create recourse, a complaint method that we haven't had before. Because, and we haven't had a complaint method because following everything that the Secretary of State's office does and pointing to them as our, hey, we do everything they do, works great, except that they don't handle municipal complaints. So there was no way, if things, if someone told Lisa, I'm not turning in any forms, there was no, there was no enforcement or recourse, because the state didn't want to touch it. So I appreciate us thinking of that, Lisa thinking of that and wanting to bring that in. But otherwise, I don't think we want to recreate all of the rules that the state has about, again, PAC contributions, corporations, you have to be a citizen to donate, like, all of that stuff, we should just follow. Because the state already has the rules, let's do it the way they do it.
I agree, and I think just referencing that in this document somewhere would be really advantageous, because that doesn't have to recreate the wheel, but at the same time, we acknowledge the rulemaking process as being invaluable, because otherwise, if we do this as a standalone document, this rules. If we don't reference state statute or rulemaking in this document, somebody could easily come up and say, I got a $20,000 donation, you can't, I don't have to tell you who did it or why. And that concerns me.
It could be a $100 donation. It could be a hundred dollar donation, I mean.
We, I think we need to first find out whether it's rulemaking authority or it's statute adopted by the General Assembly. To me, that's a critical question before we, I'm agreeing with you, we should go down that, that line, but.
Right. According to the Secretary of State's website, it is, um, it, it is under Fair Campaign Practice, it's CRS Title I, Article forty-five, and there's a whole section about it there, and then there's rules and rules of notice making. So it should be pretty easy for our legal staff to figure that out-
Yeah.
-and come back to us.
If I'm understanding all of this right, it's really both. So we would probably need, let's say, two different references.
Okay.
Okay, I think I-
There's some nice music going on.
I, I think that to be, and I don't want to belabor this anymore, but I think to be clear, we need to say something about, to the extent our ordinance is not in conflict with either state statute or state rules, because then we could create a conflict if we don't do that.
So to wrap up this discussion, I feel like council has, has given our legal staff lots of input and needs to see this come back to us.
Agreed.
Okay. Okay, next, housing, and come back to us in a work session, let me just be clear. Like, we're not ready to vote on this, I feel like.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, okay. Housing needs, next up on our agenda, Housing Needs Assessment Presentation. Our planning manager, Jase, I'll quote, what's going on with our housing needs assessment?
We've got a lot of things going on, uh, all related to housing. So, thanks and good morning, council members. I'm gonna share my screen here, and it's gonna work. There we go. So what I'll do, um, I've got, I think, allocated thirty minutes to this. I'll keep it certainly briefer than that. I've done a number of presentations over the course of the last two months in front of groups, specific to just a summary of our Housing Needs Assessment, as has Chris Ottinger. And so I'll give a, a real brief, hopefully brief overview, maybe five to ten minutes on it, and then I kind of want to open it up to more open dialogue about some of the recommendations, uh, and moving forward with kind of our upcoming code, um, adoption and, and code modifications. So, just for a little bit of background, uh, I just wanted to provide this slide as some housing terminology. Um, on the Western slope, we typically see single-family detached residential. Um, in higher kind of urban areas, you're gonna see more of the multifamily, high-rise, mid-rise type apartment complexes or condos, but really the missed area is what's referred to as missing middle housing. This is duplexes, triplexes, uh, and smaller condo buildings, really anything between about three and twelve units, uh, per, per building or per structure. And that's what we don't see a lot of in the Western slope. So with the Housing Needs Assessment, Points Consulting was the consultant for this, and they provided this chart here that just reflects, uh, what their estimates are, and that comes out to about two-hundred-and-eighteen residential units per year. Uh, they've got a breakdown of what they anticipate or, or feel that two-hundred-and-eighteen falls, or is most suited towards. So you've got single-family, middle density, uh, and a number, but two-hundred-and-eighteen is kind of the sweet spot number that they're proposing through twenty forty.
Can you just clarify that we would need, or that you're going to build anyway, what's two-eighteen?
Two-eighteen, yeah, thanks, Ann. Um, two-eighteen would refer to what we need to accommodate future growth. So population growth, moving forward, two-hundred-and-eighteen units a year would be required to satisfy that. Uh, will we grow more than that? Uh, we certainly could. Will we grow less? It's possible to, and I'll get into those projections , uh, in the next slide. But two-hundred-and-eighteen is that requirement just solely based on, uh, anticipated population growth. Um, again, that equates to about four thousand or just shy of four thousand units, um, up through twenty forty. And what's interesting here is really the bulk of that, um, is likely to come in the next seven to ten years, um, or a higher percentage, I should say. Uh, and again, I'll kind of touch on that here on the next slide. So as far as population change goes, this is, uh, the chart or the graph provided by Points Consulting, and this is based on a number of data points through the state demographer's office, the US Census, uh, among, you know, many other sources. But what it reflects is that our natural increase or our population increase is actually decreasing. So our residents here in Montrose aren't having a whole lot of kids, and we have a fairly high elderly population. So we're seeing actually a decrease from current residents. Where we're seeing an increase is migration. Um, so we're, we've seen it pretty consistently since about twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Um, our migration numbers have been pretty high, about four to six hundred, four to eight hundred, uh, over the last five to six years. Um, so our population growth, again, primarily coming from that migration number. Yes?
That, where it says, average of plus six hundred net new residents from two sixteen to two twenty-one, and then but right below that, it says maintain pace in twenty twenty-two, plus seven fifty-one. So above, is that six hundred per annum, or?
Yep, per, per, per year.
Per year, okay.
Yeah, thanks for that clarification. And yeah, about six hundred new, and again, that's the migration numbers, uh, per year, and that seven fifty-one refers to the migration number. Um, but as you can see, we didn't actually gain a total of seven fifty-one total in, uh, or, we're not gaining that number because we're losing, uh, again, kind of our natural citizen population here, um, slightly at about one to two hundred, uh, So this is, uh, population forecasts. The yellow line shows the, uh, Points Consulting figure with the blue line or darker line showing the DOLA forecasted number. Um, so I just wanted to show this to reflect that our consultant team wasn't way off base in terms of their estimates. They, they're pretty on track with DOLA. I'll also say that DOLA is pretty consistently on the high end of estimates. They actually just, uh, decreased their growth expectation pretty substantially in October of twenty twenty-two. Um, their twenty forty projection was actually in excess of sixty thousand prior to that, and they reduced that to about fifty-four thousand, um, in October. Um, so I just wanted to really reflect what that looks like. Getting more into kind of the, the nitty-gritty, uh, and the actual affordability issue we're seeing, um, this is just a very simplistic chart that shows, uh, renters affordability gap. And basically, the darker shaded area, the, the blue area, that reflects, uh, the number of renters that are cost burdened. What that means is they're paying more than thirty percent of their income on rent. Um, for the city, that equates to forty-one percent. Uh, for the county, that equates to forty-five percent. That county number encompasses the city, that's one point to, to make. Um, so that actually falls in line with national averages right now. There's about, about forty to fifty percent of the national population is cost burdened when it comes to rent. So we're not, it's certainly not just a local Montrose thing, this is a nationwide, uh, issue, uh, and rent rates have certainly gone up over the, the course of the last two years in particular. This is a, a really interesting graphic here, uh, and what it reflects is, um, to purchase the average valued home in Montrose, and this was May twenty twenty-three numbers, I think that price point was about four hundred and fifteen thousand. Um, to purchase an average-priced home, you would need eighty-eight thousand dollars in median or household income to not be cost burdened. Um, that excludes seventy-four percent of the population. Uh, that's, uh, that's a high number even nationally, um, just, um, because our, our median income's only fifty-five thousand. Um, and so it's, it's pretty steep there, and that's what's kind of interesting about this is, again, seventy-four percent is a, is a pretty high number who can't afford a median-priced home right now.
Jase?
Yeah.
How much are the fluctuating interest rates affecting that as well?
I think pretty substantially. Um, just from what I hear, um, when you look at interest rates, uh, a year to eighteen months ago, uh, compared to now, you're looking at a, a four percentage point increase. Uh, what that equates to is almost a forty percent increase in your actual monthly payment. Um, so, pretty dramatic. Uh, and this does account for the May twenty twenty-three interest rates, which I think were probably about six and a half percent, uh, and they have not decreased since then. Uh, Councilmember Yulberry actually asked a question, and it's, it's a good question to ask of, uh, and this was a couple of weeks ago, about, uh, how many lots have we platted here in Montrose, and how many single-family permits and residential permits have we actually issued? So I just wanted to include this. Uh, I'll do an annual, uh, growth report kind of every year at the end of the year for council, moving forward, to, to have some more detail on this specifically. But what it shows is, um, you know, pretty steady growth, um, from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty in both platted lots and, uh, single-family residential builds. Uh, and then the pandemic hit, and things just skyrocketed. Uh, lots platted increased substantially, uh, preliminary subdivision plats increased substantially, um, and single-family residential permits increased substantially. Um, we are seeing a, kind of a, a normalizing of it, and I think, uh, part of that is the interest rate situation and dynamic we're currently in. But really what we're seeing now, and it's tough to read this, I apologize, it's a bit small on the screen, um, I, the last bar for both these charts shows quarter two, basically through the second quarter of twenty twenty-three. Those numbers are kind of normal for pre-pandemic numbers. Um, so it seems to be more of a stabilization, um, and, and less, um, not chaos, but less, you know, real sizable increases on that front. These are just maps showing hotspots of where the primary development has been. Um, really no surprise here, on the left side of the screen just shows the hotspots for single-family development. Um, you know, Bear Creek to the north, uh, you've got, uh, Cobble Creek to the kind of south-southwest, um, Waterfall Canyon to the west as well, as some other infill projects that we've seen since twenty thirteen. Multifamilies also picked up. Uh, really, we saw a pretty sizable increase starting in about twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Prior to that, we really didn't have anything at all. Um, but we've, we've seen an increase with Base Camp, we've had some recently approved projects with the Casa project along the bypass, as well as residences at Dry Cedar Creek. Um, and we continue to see, uh, increased interest in multifamily. I think as the affordability issue continues with, uh, uh, you know, for sale products like detached single-family, we're seeing, um, real high demand for multifamily.
Jase, I have a question about the multifamily developments by unit since twenty seventeen. Are we talking about when they're permitted, when they get a CO, like, when, when is it show up on the map? Because I'm trying to figure out, like, the residents at Dry Cedar Creek, I don't really see that on there, but that's because they were just moving dirt. Base Camp, some of them are open, but not all of them. You know, like, what, when do they show up on the map?
Great question. Um, those recent projects aren't shown up on the map, um, and it's actually a map that I'd like to update for the year-end growth report, just to show that specifically. Uh, great point made there. Um, but these would be when they're permitted, and we know-
Permitted meaning?
Um-
Like, no.
No, no, not certificate of, yeah, building permit, so just starting construction.
Okay.
Um, and that's, that's when they'd show up here, and as we know, um, construction can take a long time, it can sometimes be a short time, so.
Sure. But this map was, does this reflect, I mean, this isn't obviously through yesterday, so when was this map last updated?
This is through May of twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so it wouldn't reflect Dry Cedar Creek, which seems like it's been more recent than that, but would reflect Base Camp?
Correct. Yep, and it's done by a census tract, so it doesn't give a great depiction. I, I like the map on the left with the hotspots.
Right, because this, like, that whole thing is blue because of one development in it.
Correct, yeah, and there's some other infills within that area, but that's primarily why you're seeing that dark shaded, and, and that's, that'll be the goal moving forward, um, is to have more of a hotspot map similar to the one on the left, specific to multifamily.
If it's gonna, and if a map like this is gonna direct council action, it seems like it would need to be really updated for us to really know where we are.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You said that does include, for the multifamily, that does include Base Camp, then?
Correct, yep. Here's, uh, just the home values over time that we've, we've seen. Uh, pretty steady, consistent growth, really, uh, coming out of the recession, starting in about twenty thirteen. Um, you know, generally about six, seven, eight percent annual growth, uh, and then we saw a really major ramp up in twenty twenty. Um, we've seen, you know, twenty, forty, sixty percent growth, um, since, since that point, kind of depends on the neighborhood, but really sizable, um, in, in that sense. And one thing to note here is, I think we hear a lot of this, oh, it's cheaper in Montrose to live than it is, say, on the front range. Well, that's actually not necessarily true when you factor in actual median income of our residents here. Um, it's actually just the same, uh, at the end of the day, uh, to live here and to work here. Um, so while maybe for, for folks who are kind of on the cusp of retirement or retirements, um, that aren't, necessarily have the, the income, uh, situation that, that workers are looking at, um, it might be more affordable for them, but for your average worker, it's, it's not at the end of the day. Uh, and then one thing to note is rental rates. Um, so again, pretty steady rental rate increase, um, similar to price increase until about twenty twenty. Uh, and then we've seen about twenty to forty percent, depending on property type, um, since that twenty twenty mark. Um, pretty substantial, uh, increase there.
Is that pretty consistent across the state?
Pretty consistent, yeah, I would say so, and, uh, pretty consistent, I think, uh, across the Western slope. I think the Western slope might have, might have seen actually higher increases from a rental rate standpoint, uh, than a lot of other areas. And I think that plays into account, uh, just, um, the, the area, the, the work-from-home, uh, situation that came about with COVID and, and a few other things, uh, just the desirable location.
Can you flip back one second? So when we say, when we show the home values over time graph, is that median price?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
And I won't go into detail on this, but I did just, uh, just want to reflect really what the residents have said. So we did a community survey as part of this Housing Needs Assessment, uh, and had twelve hundred and thirty-six responses, a phenomenal response rate at the end of the day. Um, I think the, uh, the survey that went out recently for the recycling, uh, was extremely, I, I think it had a lot of, uh, a lot of input in that as well. Um, but this was a really high number, we were really proud of that. Uh, we did it in both English and Spanish, uh, really pushed the word out, uh, and, and got a lot of good feedback. I don't know that it was surprising feedback at the end of the day, but, uh, I think valuable nonetheless. Um, so just from a cost perception standpoint, what we see here is that overall, uh, eighty-seven percent of, um, of participants thought that it was either too expensive to buy or somewhat expensive to buy in Montrose. Pretty high number there. Uh, and then same thing for rentals, seventy-nine percent said it was too expensive or somewhat expensive. And one thing for the rentals is fifteen percent said they were unsure or didn't know, likely homeowners that just didn't know the rental rates and what, what the changes looked like. But overall, I, I think the consensus is, it's very expensive right now.
Jase, one question I have is, David Spears had mentioned that there's gonna be a regional comparison between their survey results. Is there any kind of way we can check a regional comparison for this type of question? Because I, I would, I just have that feeling deep in my soul that we're, if you went to anywhere in America, they're gonna give you that answer.
I don't know of a good way to do a regional comparison, but I don't, uh, I, I certainly would think the same. I think this is pretty regional. One thing, um, that I'll mention, the consultant was doing a Housing Needs Assessment in the Midwest, and if you look back at one of my previous slides that stated that only, uh, or seventy-four percent are essentially priced out of the market, some areas of the Midwest, that number's only twenty, twenty-five percent. Um, granted, the Midwest is not Montrose, or some areas of it, um, aren't, but, uh, I, I think it, it all depends. I think in the West in particular, uh, this is probably a pretty typical response. Um, so, uh, but happy to reach out to some colleagues I've got in other jurisdictions and, and get a feel, but I think you're spot-on. So this was just a, a question about, uh, housing and what types of housing residents would want to see more of, uh, within the city. And what this really shows is, I think that residents overall are amenable to different housing types. You know, what we've typically seen traditionally is detached, single-family housing, and that is the second highest up there, but what we also have a high response rate on is attached, single-family, like townhomes, duplexes, uh, market-rate apartments, senior living, rent subsidized apartments. These were all, uh, things that, um, you know, the citizen population, uh, stated they'd actually like to see more of. Uh, the top thing, the, the top, uh, requested response there is workforce housing. What that means, and this is sometimes, um, we've had to do a lot of education on this to, to citizens and residents, is, um, what that means. And really, it means you're not paying more than thirty percent of your income on housing as a whole. So that could be apartments, that could be townhomes, that could be, um, detached, single-family, just refers to that income threshold. threshold.
So that top one could actually be divided into some of the other ones?
Correct.
And make those other ones a little bit larger?
In theory, it could. Yep. Just one more question, I think, here I wanted to show, and the question was, what tools would you be in favor of for the Montrose community to provide more housing moving forward? Again, just shows the kind of number of responses and, and I think the capacity amongst residents here of what could be provided. And this includes incentives for remodeling or redevelopment, rent-subsidized housing, deed restriction, you know, changes in code, regulations, requirements to accommodate for more housing types and variety. Again, just shows the kind of wide range of responses received. All right, I'm sorry, this is the last question. I always like to end on this question. Within the neighborhood you reside, should Montrose work to maintain lower density housing or increase housing density? And this is the tough dynamic when, you know, from an elected official standpoint and a staff standpoint. It's, I think the general consensus is, everyone knows we need more housing. We need more affordable housing. We need to fill some of these positions at hospitals and other things. But where does it go? And, and this is the struggle we deal with day in and day out. It's just fascinating that a majority said they'd actually like to see lower density in their, in their area. So that's the conclusion. Again, tried to keep that high-level overview. It's, that, that needs assessment is posted on our website, but then kind of opened it up for a little bit more discussion about the recommendations that came. And I'll say, some of these recommendations are probably overreaching, and some of them are a bit more realistic. And from just the general inputs and discussion here, I think that's when staff will move into what we're classifying as kind of our Phase Two code update. And I've referred to this in the past. Phase One was the consolidation that's complete. Now Phase Two is actually looking at some modifications moving forward, but wanted to obviously get city council input as far as next, next steps. So one recommendation was accessory dwelling units. This is kind of a hot, hot topic these days, and the consultant had looked at allowing accessory dwelling units, really in all zone districts was one of their recommendations, all residential zone districts, whether, you know, low density or high density.
Can I just interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
I'm looking at the clock and everything. Is your presentation today with recommendations, are you going to want some direction from council today on these recommendations?
I think it could maybe a start to the conversation.
Okay.
And, and, and so that's one thing to mention, too, is we'll have a work session with our code consultants. The plan for that is in about a month and a half.
Okay.
To have some kind of even further discussion.
Because it feels like this deserves way more time than the current clock allows. So maybe what you could do today is say, hey, here are some things I want you guys to think about, and we will discuss it later. And so, as we look at the.
Yeah, I don't want to cut this discussion short.
Right. So I don't, yeah, this deserves more time than we have today to discuss. So why don't you lay out for us, here are things you guys should go and think about.
Perfect. Absolutely. I think that's a, a, a great idea, and I agree, this is something that could be discussed for hours at a time, and I've done it with a number of folks, but.
And if we need to schedule a whole nother work session just to dig into this, because I do think that second phase of code updates, you really want council's direction to take this information, combine it with our code updates, and have it reflect what we, as the elected people, think our community wants to see.
I actually would prefer a standalone meeting.
Okay.
So, yeah. So why don't you kind of quickly go through, here are things to think about, and we'll schedule a work session specifically to take the housing needs assessment survey information, these recommendations, and, and move forward with what we would want to see for code. So, yeah. So I think in that sense, you can just kind of quickly go over, like a teaser to what that session would look like right now.
Perfect. Teaser, I'll, I'll try, you know, five to seven minutes here. So I'll, I'll just go through high level of all five of the recommendations that were outlined. The first is ADUs, and again, looking at ADUs in all zone districts. Or is ADU something to just look at, you know, on a smaller scale, like expanding the redo district? And that's where ADUs are currently allowed. So food for thought there. I think more discussion can be had, but that's, that's one of the recommendations, as well as what was a really interesting concept of developing pre-approved ADU plans. Mom and pops do a lot of ADUs, and that process can take a long time. So if we had some simplistic process to that, I think that would certainly help. Recommendation two is just allowing, just more broader thought here of allowing higher density within medium or lower-density zones. What this could look like is allowing duplexes in R-two zone districts, improving the allowance for multifamily in R-three. What that means potentially is possibly removing the conditional use permit requirement that's currently required in the R-three for any multifamily development. That just is an added step, added hearing process. Is it worth looking at that to remove? And then allowing higher density in our high-density zone district. We get a lot of questions about density from a staff level. A lot of times, what dictates density is actually site development requirements, parking, landscaping, things along those lines. So is it worth looking at having a higher-density threshold, knowing that those are important factors? Recommendation three, so we've got eleven residential zoning districts right now, and the thought here is just to consolidate a couple of those. The bulk of our zoned land is R-two and R-three. That's over fifty percent of our total land area in the city. And then we've got R-one A, R-one B, that are about one to two percent. We've got R-five and R-six, which are manufactured housing zones that are also very nominal. So possibly consolidating those and just having less zone districts as a whole to simplify and just make things a little bit clearer for the development community. Recommendation four is improve access to non-subsidized affordable housing in Montrose. One option for that could be allowing for modular or manufactured housing in all or more areas. So this was one of the code updates brought, brought forth with the consolidation processes, just clarifying exactly what manufactured and modular housing are. They are two kind of different, different items completely, and, and just seeing if there's value in allowing those in more zoning districts, because they are currently only allowed in the R-five and R-six zones, which are mobile, or the modular manufactured housing districts, as well as modular housing can be within a plan development. There's a couple other things I won't dive into too much detail on about manufactured housing parks and kind of transitioning to public infrastructure and creating a, an affordable housing fund. But those are, again, all within the report. Then the last recommendation that was reflected in the needs assessment was having a minimum density threshold. What this really means is, right now for our higher-density zones, R-three A, R-four, those are generally intended for higher-density housing, right? Well, our code doesn't require the high density actually be constructed. Someone could build a single-family residence on a large lot, and that essentially is a use by right. So establishing minimum density to more or less incentivize, require higher density to be built in those areas that are really meant for higher density, that are well-served by infrastructure, amongst other things. But high level, hopefully that kind of was a bit of a teaser and, and happy to, to bring more. But I think these are, are great things to, to mull over. I think another one that wasn't directly indicated is the PD requirement for multifamily. Any multifamily project that has more than one building goes through a PD, plan development, and that can add four or five months to a project as a whole. So something to keep in mind there. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. I think this is something we really do want to dive into and, and really talk about and go forward with that second phase of updating our housing code. I think we'll let staff work out the timing of that and get back to council with suggested timeframe for our work session.
Standalone work session, so perhaps, so that means different time in your normal work session.
Yeah, just so we can give it the time it really needs, as opposed to running up against a clock and a time in a hearing at noon, and still some stuff to talk about.
Thank you, Jase. That was great. And I, I think we're all looking forward to that discussion. Next up, and I wanted to make sure we allowed time for this, is this general council discussion or updating calendar as we get into the budget adoption? You all got a little slip paper. But we wanted to talk about holiday schedules, and we wanted to make sure that at least we'd have a quorum for these meetings. So for example, I know that the second reading of an adoption of the twenty twenty-four budget ordinance is just right before Thanksgiving. And I personally am not going to be here. I'm going to visit my kiddos and be out of town that whole week.
I will be too.
And, and David Reed will be too, which means we'd either need to look at a different date, or none of the three of you could miss that meeting. So we had a quorum. Did you see the issues?
I can do it by Zoom, but I wouldn't be here personally.
So neither of you will be here for the twenty-first, is that what you're saying?
The twenty-first is what, what day of the week is it?
It's a Tuesday.
And it's also our city council meeting.
Right, exactly. That, that's, yes, and it's Tuesday.
And I planned on attending the city council meeting by Zoom, but I won't be here physically.
Okay, we'll, we'll discuss that.
That's what we're discussing.
Well, we're not discussing the city council meeting, we're discussing budget meetings.
We're discussing all of that. We're discussing.
Well, this would be at the twenty-first council meeting, right?
Right.
Yeah, well, okay, discussing everything then. We need to arrange, because we've discovered running a council meeting by Zoom is not workable.
It's pretty difficult to do a council meeting.
If you lose connection.
Right. Bill, do you want to chime in? I mean, do you have opinions on how council should do the schedule? I mean, should we have a council meeting two days before Thanksgiving? Should, do we have other choices of adopting the budget? Should we reschedule that meeting for the following week?
We can, we had talked about possibly doing it the week prior. So there are options. We can move it along as long as we meet those deadlines for adoption of the budget. And so we want to be before the end of November.
Like either the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, and chime in if you're reading emails from Shani.
No, I'm not reading emails from Shani. I'm just trying to think of how to summarize. So it is possible that we wouldn't need any special meetings in order to do this. We would just move the entire adoption schedule up a little bit, so that you wouldn't be voting on anything related to the budget on the twenty-first, I think. Or the other option that we talked about with Shani would be to have a special meeting. If we don't have a quorum on the twenty-first, or, you know, it's a big deal, adopting the budget. If you'd all prefer to be in the room and adopt the budget, we can have a special meeting the next week on the twenty-eighth. And those, those were the best options that we came up with. But if.
Well, let me ask my fellow city councilors if they would be amenable to having our city council meeting moved from the twenty-first to either the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth. I believe our staff who have kids in the school district have that whole week off. I don't know that for sure. Yeah, that's true. So it impacts.
The week of the twentieth.
The week of the twentieth. So it doesn't, so it's not just me visiting my kids for that week, or Jay David visiting his kids, all of our staff members who have kids in Montrose County School District. So can we move it to the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth?
I'll let the fourteenth. Makes no difference to me.
Either way, it's fine.
Okay. Well, then, if it makes no difference to anybody, and Dave spoke up for them.
My schedule is dictated by my current life situation, that applies. And so I'm amenable to show up when I can, and if I can't, then you'll understand.
Absolutely. I think that's all the more important, that we try to schedule these when we know, when we know, try to not schedule these when we know two of us are not going to be here, because that gives you some flexibility, and we aren't counting on you to make a quorum in case you weren't able to be here.
On the fourteenth, David will be here to run the meeting in person.
I'll be here on the fourteenth.
You'll be here on the fourteenth, yeah.
Yeah. So let's move the city council meeting to the fourteenth, which would change that November twenty-first date to the fourteenth. And Bill, speak up if you see an issue with the staff side of this. I'm, I'm looking at the council side.
No, that's great.
Okay. And then I'll bring up the same issue with December nineteenth, that that runs right up to the, well, I mean, it's six days before Christmas. I'm out of town.
I will be gone.
You'll be gone the nineteenth also. Perhaps, can we keep the meeting the nineteenth, but get, but get ahead of, but move all of the budget things up, or?
You're both going to be on the nineteenth of December?
Yeah.
So we'll go into the same thing, that if there's something happens with Susan, then we're in a problem.
Right. That's why I'm suggesting we don't count on.
Moving our special meeting for the budget to a earlier date, so that we're ahead of our required timeframe?
I think we've got the budget adoption handled. So, yeah, but just the supplemental.
This is a supplemental, right.
We can make sure to do that at the meeting in advance. It's just whether you'd like to have a meeting on the nineteenth or not. We can make sure supplemental is approved on December fifth.
Okay, so you can move the budget readings forward closer sooner. So those will all be out of the way. So now the question is simply, with two council members knowing they're out of town, do we want to have a council meeting on the nineteenth? Do we want to reschedule it, or do we want to cancel it?
I would advocate canceling it, because that's right before Christmas vacation. As you pointed out, between staff and council, we have the opportunity to give everybody a little bit of a break for Christmas, and let them have a little bit of time, and not put that imposition of them having to modify their kids' schedule.
So I'm, and the council is proposing that we cancel the city council meeting on the nineteenth of December. I think our charter bylaws rules allow us to, while we, it does say we hold two meetings a month, there is flexibility to cancel a certain number a year.
Yes, we move that in July.
Yeah.
Do you have a problem with that, or that I'm not thinking of, canceling the nineteenth?
And if something comes up that's really super timely, something has to get voted on because of an end-of-the-year grant application or something, we'll call a special meeting to take care of it, and we'll try and find a time where three council members can be available for such a special meeting. Otherwise, we'll cancel, cancel the meeting on the nineteenth.
Are you also canceling the work session on the eighteenth?
Yes.
Good.
And the same would be true, I guess, we should just, that's a great question, Bill, because they usually go hand to hand, hand in hand. On the twenty-first, I, I would also suggest if we're moving the work session from the twentieth to the thirteenth, which would include the citizen interactive session. So everything in November goes a week earlier, and everything in December is canceled.
The last part of December.
The last part of December, yeah, that week. Are we all on the same page?
Yes.
Are there any questions?
No.
Most importantly, as the keeper of the calendar for council meetings, are you good?
I'm fine with that.
Fantastic. Okay. So I think because of time, I'm going to, I'm going to say, unless anyone has anything they have to say right now, we want to end this and take a five-minute break.
Can I just say one thing quickly?
Yeah, of course.
As you, I believe all know that we were invited to the CMU press conference in Grand Junction on the fourteenth of September, where they're going to be announcing that any households whose income is sixty-five thousand dollars or less will receive a free education at CMU or CMU Tech. And as a council, we were all invited. I plan on attending, even though it is the golf tournament day. My golf skills suggest I do go to CMU. So, is anybody else interested in going?
I can't.
It looks like you are going to represent.
I'll be it.
Thank you for doing that. It's great. Thanks for doing that. And, and a reminder, tomorrow is our CML district meeting in Delta, and I'll ask each of you individually during the break or after our next session if you're going. Okay, so let's conclude, let's end our work session, let's take a five-minute break, and at noon, those of us who need to be here are going to be here for a special city council meeting, which is consisting of a licor license hearing. So take your necessary quick break, and then we'll reconvene for special city council meeting. Thanks.